Staff ready? Paul, you ready? All right. Julie, Alan. We'll go ahead and get started. Has anybody heard from Joe?
He's traveling on business.
Okay. Okay. Good. Well, before we get started, I want to thank and welcome our chaplain, Mento Ramet, to lead us in an invocation.
Thank you. Let's pray. Almighty God, you are the King of the universe, and we are guests in the world that you have created. You have appointed us to be stewards and caretakers, and as such, we need your wisdom, your grace, and your competence as we take care of the affairs that you have put upon our shoulders. And I pray especially for the city council, and the mayor, and the city staff that is gathered here tonight, as they attend to the affairs of this city, I pray that you do give them your wisdom and grace them with your presence, and guide their minds in making decisions that are fair and good, and affect the quality of life for the city for the better. We, as always, pray for safety for those that serve the city out on the streets, our police officers, and our fire department, as well as public works, workers that are out there in traffic and doing repairs. And we pray for the citizens of the city of Milton. We pray for your continued safety, your hand of grace upon them, freedom from crime, freedom from discord, and a quality of life that truly reflects your glory. And with due respect to all faith that may be represented here tonight, I make my prayer in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Wednesday, January 19th, 2011, to order. Before we start, I just want to say we've got a special guest, Mr. Paul Lagerblum, sitting here, and he's going to help us out tonight and lead the pledge, but also, Paul, if you don't know, your dad does a great job running our city of Milton, so we're all excited and proud to have him here working with us, so you should be real proud of him. So will the city clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would be happy to call roll for the January 19th, 2011, regular meeting. However, I'd like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk's staff prior to tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. When you hear the bell, you have 30 seconds to complete your remarks. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association provided, however, that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, appers, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Julie Zoner Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longori is out of town on business tonight. Councilmember Alan Tartt.
Here.
And we'd like to welcome our city manager junior, Paul Lagerblum, who's going to help lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Does Paul want to lead it from down there, or do you want to come up here by the flag with us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, and a God invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Paul. Good job. All right. Will the city clerk please sound the next item?
Our next item is approval of meeting agenda. This is agenda item number 11-011.
Do we have anything else to be considered?
We do, Mr. Mayor. I've got two items to propose to you tonight. One is on an emergency basis, which I'll explain during the agenda item, is to add under new business a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute time-sensitive documents regarding the financing of the acquisition of certain real property located at 13690 Highway 9, Milton, Georgia, which will be financed or refinanced pursuant to either a lease-purchase agreement or an installment-sale agreement between the Georgia Municipal Association and the city of Milton, Georgia, as well as I'd like to add an executive session to discuss pending litigation and land acquisition.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have reviewed the resolution that the city manager is referencing, and I do believe it fits the criteria of our ability to add it as an emergency item.
Okay. And also want to talk about existing litigation during our meeting, but that, wouldn't that be covered in this?
Yes, current litigation and land ac-- I'm going to throw land acquisition in there as well, just a very brief discussion.
Okay. No problem. Okay. Anybody else have anything? Not, do I have a motion in a second?
Mayor, I'll put forward a motion to approve the meeting agenda with staff's recommendation to add under new business the resolution as was stated by our city manager, as well as to add an executive session for purposes of current litigation as well as land acquisition.
I'll second it.
Okay. I have a motion and a second from the councilmember Bailey and councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. The city clerk, do we have any public comment?
No, sir, we do not.
Point of order, Mr. City Manager, I don't really need to read through if we don't have any public comment, do I?
You do not, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Move on to the consent agenda. The city clerk will sound these items.
Our first item is approval of the January 5th, 2011, regular minutes, agenda item number 11-012. Second is approval of a contract with J.J. Constructors, Inc., for repairs to the improvements on the Cogburn Road Bridge in the amount of $13,500, agenda item number 11-013. Next is approval of professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Engineering and Inspection Systems, Inc., to provide civil engineering planning and design services for exterior improvements as part of the Bethwell Community Center renovation project in the amount of $5,250, agenda item number 11-014. Our fourth item is approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and MPZ Architects, P.C., to provide architectural, engineering, and design services for the building improvements as part of the Bethwell Community Center renovation project in the amount of $9,850, agenda item number 11-015. Our fifth item is approval of a construction services agreement between the city of Milton and Marietta Fence Company for demolition and construction of four new dugouts at Bell Memorial Park in the amount of $14,172. This is agenda item number 11-016. Our final item is approval of subdivision plats as follows. The shops at Windward Village revise property lines between tracks B and C. The shops at Windward Village revise property lines between tracks A and D. Grayburn Phase 2, final plat creates 21 lots. Grayburn Phase 3, final plat creates 31 lots. And finally, Deerfield Green Phase 2, final plat creates 28 lots. This is agenda item number 11-017.
Okay. Do I?
Mr. Mayor, I need to recuse myself from this due to potential conflict on agenda item 11-017.
Okay, then we could either vote on them all, or we could separate them out.
You can vote on the consent agenda en masse, and councilmember Hewitt can simply abstain from the entirety of the consent agenda.
Okay. Do you have a motion in a second?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Okay. Motion by councilmember Tartt, second by councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous with five, with councilmember Hewitt abstaining, and councilmember Longori not here. Okay. We don't have any items under reports and presentations. First presentation, public hearing, zoning, agenda, or unfinished business, so we're going to move on to new business. The city clerk would please sound that item.
Yes, sir. That item was added by motion and vote, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute time-sensitive documents regarding the financing of the acquisition of certain real property located at 13690 Highway 9, Milton, Georgia, which will be financed or refinanced pursuant to either a lease-purchase agreement or an installment-sale agreement between the Georgia Municipal Association, Inc., and the city of Milton, Georgia. Chris Lagerblum.
Mayor and Council, this was going to be a fairly easy one tonight, and no good deed goes unpunished, and it became uneasy about this afternoon. As part of our financing for the piece of property that's located on Highway 9 that you all are familiar with, that we are intending on closing on on February 15th, we need to line up financing for that. We have elected to explore and believe that we will go with either a GMA lease-purchase agreement or an installment-sale agreement. Working through that process, what happens is GMA will actually cause our proposal to go out to the banks. The banks will bid. We will receive the bids. We will evaluate the bids based on interest rate, fees, conditions, an assortment of things. We are represented in this case by a bond attorney, Mr. Jim Woodward, who is in this field and does this all the time, so we have good legal representation in moving through this. There's one glitch in this whole process, and this resolution is intended to close that glitch. We may or may not need this resolution. One of the banks that typically responds to these bids when GMA goes to the market is the Bank of America. One of their requirements is that within 24 hours of them responding with their bid, the council has to take action to agree to it. That would mean that if Bank of America happens to bid on this, which we don't know that they will or they won't, and if they happen to, if they happen to be the bidder that was selected, which we don't know if they will be or won't, this puts us in a position that if they respond, and if they happen to be the most qualified bidder, we can actually take action. And what this resolution does is allows me to take that action on a time-sensitive basis. These bids are due back a week from this Friday, which if they come back Friday at noon, in order to act between Friday and Saturday at noon, or even Friday and Monday at noon, depending on how you might define 24 hours, there's not likely a council meeting or even that I could get the council back together to take that official action. That's what this resolution allows. If Bank of America is not selected, if a different bank is selected, or if we choose to purchase the property outright and not go through financing, which still remains an option, and I can explain that to you a little bit later, then this resolution is really just more of a formality to put us in a position to be able to make a decision. That's why it's here. I was hoping tonight that instead of putting this resolution on the agenda on an emergency basis, I was going to put a resolution on here allowing you all to accept one of the bids. The bids were due back today, but because of the storm, GMA did not get them out to the market, which now puts us in the next Friday. Our timing is still fine, but that's why this resolution is the way it is, and it's not you all approving a certain bid tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Chris on this?
I had just had one question. Any of the other banks we would be able to have a council meeting prior to that time?
That's correct. That's our council's recommendation at this point. This is a requirement that only the Bank of America has. Uniquely, what he has said, just to give you some background, is that they typically have a very good interest rate as well. So having a good interest rate and being highly sought after, they stick in some potential extra steps that the others don't. This is just a mechanism to make sure that we don't have one of those gotcha moments next Friday where we really want to accept their bid, but we can't.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Do I have a motion in a second?
I'd like to put forward a motion to approve resolution number 11-01-169.
Second it.
Okay. I've got a motion by councilmember Hewitt, second by councilmember Thurman. It's a discussion among the council. Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Any councilmembers have anything they want to report on?
I'm so sorry. Forgive me.
Any councilmembers have anything they want to report on, or?
Just a quick comment.
Sure.
One, I wanted to thank Public Safety, Public Works, as well as our city staff for all the work that went into last week. Obviously, that unexpected storm did not preclude all of those folks in this building still being very involved and engaged. I know our citizens appreciated that, as did all of us, and I know that there was a tremendous amount of effort to coordinate with the state DOT and with other jurisdictions. I heard from, as I'm sure a lot of people did, a lot of thank yous from citizens for the work that you did, and I want to express that on their behalf as well as my own. And I don't know that tonight's the right night. I would, I think, as we always look for areas that we can continue to improve and coordinate, and I just wanted to propose, whether it be at a work session or sometime, you know, at the appropriate meeting, for us just to talk about what are some things that we can do if we have such a storm in another 15 or 18 years. And I know that, in fact, the night, or the meeting before that storm, we had a new emergency plan put in place, and we have a lot of that stuff in place. I just think it would be great to hear from you guys in terms of what additional steps do you think would be appropriate, given the experiences that we had this week? You know, what things have we learned? And it may be that we don't want to propose anything new, but I suspect if we all sat around a table, we'd come up with some good ideas. So I just wondered, I don't know when that's going to be, but I just would propose that at some point soon, we have a discussion at a work session.
Just not in the summer.
Not in the summer, yes.
You know, let me, I'll make a comment too, and this is one of those situations where, and I think everybody heard, you know, feedback from all cities, and especially the DOT and whatnot, it's not something that, you know, if we had this every year, then we certainly would budget and plan for a lot more, but I do want to obviously thank our staff, because I'll have to say, I got a whole lot more. The majority of the comments I got was that streets in Milton look better than in some of the surrounding cities and areas in the DOT, so, you know, thank you, guys, and appreciate everything you did. Carter, your staff were very busy.
You didn't get to rest, and we realize that.
All right. I'll move on to staff reports.
Why don't we start with the one that we have published, and then I would like to give you all kind of a recap response to the storm. That was one that we wanted to do tonight with a short meeting, and then I want to give you just a 30-second update on this building that we're sitting in. But let's go over the public report first.
Thanks. Mayor and council, back in 2004, Fulton County was awarded a T grant for transportation enhancements and improvements within the Crab Apple area. This particular grant was associated with the Phase 1 streetscape improvements that had already been done along Crab Apple Road down there, and included some improvements along Broadwell, Mayfield, Crab Apple, and Mid-Broadwell Road. We have held that grant fund since that time, hopefully in anticipation, tacking it on to some proposed construction, transportation construction in that area, but we've been notified by Moreland Altobelli on behalf of Georgia DOT that we need to move forward with this grant. And so with a couple of projects in that particular area right now, we've got the Mayfield-Crab Apple transportation project going on right now, the Little Oliver project going on right now. Our concern is that if we begin this project without knowing the results of those two studies, that we have the potential of either identifying project locations or installing project improvements that may be removed very shortly thereafter as a result of those other two studies. And so the first question becomes, this overall grant is a $500,000 grant, requires a $125,000 match on behalf of the city of Milton, and the first question is, do we move forward with it? We always have the potential of returning the grant funds and with no real implication on future grant applications, or we also have the option of moving this. We've just applied for an LCI grant in the Highway 9 corridor. We have the Highway 9 corridor design guidelines, so we do have the option of moving these grant funds to the Highway 9 corridor, where we may have a better opportunity to use those funds in a timely fashion. Now, the time limit they've given us on this is for us to have construction documents ready to bid out within two years. And while that sounds like a long time, as we know, following through with the federal purchasing practices, by the time you get through your concept plans, your environmental documents, your preliminary engineering right-of-way acquisition, that two years can go relatively quickly. And so tonight, I guess I am before you to get some feedback on whether or not, one, we want to continue this grant and try and find a place to use it, and, two, if we would prefer to move this grant from the Crab Apple area while we have these other studies going on and pursue projects in the Highway 9 corridor, where we can tie it into the LCI grant that's currently been applied for.
Okay. Now, kind of open it up. Does anybody want to give us feedback? Karen?
I actually worked with Fulton County to obtain that grant. My fear is, I've heard from many of the store owners right there on Mayfield Road in Crab Apple going down where the little shop was that didn't make it, where the flower store is a little further down, on both sides, that they would really like to have sidewalks. They feel like the lack of sidewalks has tremendously hurt their business, because people either have to walk on a hill or walk down the street, which is not real safe. Is it possible to use some of it there and use some of it then at Highway, the rest of it at Highway 9, or is it an all-or-nothing type thing? I just really hate, you know, I think if we transfer all of that money away from Crab Apple, we're going to, we're going to hear from some unhappy people that have been pushing for sidewalks.
Well, I think when you break those projects up, part of the problem becomes with the smaller projects, it takes so long to get through this process, that there may be easier avenues to do small projects like that. Without knowing the results of the two projects we have currently going, then you also run into the potential of installing something that then gets removed shortly thereafter with larger transportation projects that may be proposed in that area. So...
I don't, I'm not sure really how we could do a whole lot in that area transportation-wise, because, I mean, you don't have but about 10 feet between the front door and the street. I just would like us to look at that before we transfer all that money away, because, like I said, I have heard from numerous people who have been pushing to have sidewalks right at that particular location, and that would probably not be happy if we transferred money that was supposed to be for their area away without them getting those sidewalks.
We can look at that option. You certainly don't have to spend the entire amount.
I don't like to give up money either.
Yeah, that's right.
Money's not easy to get free from the government, so I don't, you know...
And it doesn't preclude us from coming back in the future when plans are finalized in that area, if there are transportation improvements in that area, and applying for these grant funds again. There's certainly a reason that prevents that.
Okay. Bill? And Julie? Go ahead.
Thank you, Bill. I was going to say that, one, to your question, yes, I support continuing to utilize those funds, as was mentioned by councilmember Thurman. We don't get those sorts of federal dollars very often, and I think we do need to find a way to leverage those dollars. I support the idea of at least looking into some sidewalks, but I also understand that we don't want to expend dollars, especially with a match, that would then, six months later, or a year later, having us tearing them up, so, and I suspect we all would support not wanting to put sidewalks down and then get torn up, because that's just wasted dollars. Beyond, or thinking about timing for a minute, you mentioned the Mayfield study that's underway, and then the other study in Crab Apple. What is the time, when do we expect those studies to be completed? Can we just talk about the timeline a little bit? And is there a chance that timelines, if the moon is full and the stars are aligned, is there a chance that those things could still be completed, where these dollars could be allocated?
Probably not within that two-year timeframe. We've just started the concept design work, concept evaluation, really, on the Mayfield-Mid-Broadwell intersection project, which really incorporates the whole Crab Apple area.
Okay. So really, those two, that timeline, even if everything goes perfectly well, it's not going to happen there? Okay.
There's no way that, I don't think that could happen.
Looking at the transportation master plan, or were there, you know, obviously, we've all been through that process, and out of that, were there any other projects where these dollars, other than just sidewalks, could be allocated into Crab Apple? And at one point, we discussed a potential connection, but, and again, I don't think this is...
There's streetscape dollars.
There's, there's all streetscape, they couldn't be a part of these T and E.
Yeah, the project was specifically for sidewalk, curb and gutter, street lighting, enhancement-type.
Okay. Then I guess the next question would be, I know that there's some discussion as to whether or not the community, in conjunction with the Storm Preservation Commission, as well as the city, whether or not we're going to look to preserve the Crab Apple building, and I know that that's still a question, that people are evaluating that from a different, a lot of different perspectives. Would, depending on how that proceeds, are any of those dollars possible for that pocket park and for... park and for that community house and for what would come with that? I'm just wondering if that would, if there's a creative way that those funds could also be allocated to Crab Apple vis-à-vis that project.
Good question. I mean, typically, they're assigned to transportation-type enhancements. How you package that probably could be some way to creatively package that, and we can certainly explore that.
Because a thought would be that, obviously, the more pedestrian-friendly an environment is, the more we're positively impacting transportation. It also, I think, speaks to the grants that we've gotten for sidewalks for the schools because of the proximity to the schools, and that building could also be kind of an adjunct, you know, after-school sort of opportunity potentially. And again, this still needs to get the input of a lot of different folks, but knowing that these dollars could otherwise go away, it may be an opportunity for us if we could creatively think about some of those things that are out there, that maybe we could package it in a way that we get to utilize those funds in Crab Apple. We still get to preserve a building, enhance a pocket park, and not do something that would later be undermined by a larger transportation project.
We could certainly look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Bill? Getting back on, Julie was headed initially here on scheduling. We've applied for the LCI grant on Highway Nine. When do we expect to hear from that? Isn't that April?
Within the next couple of months, from what I understand. First quarter of this year, we would hear back whether or not we received that grant.
Okay. We're also talking about Lou Oliver's initiative in Crab Apple around that same time in March. So I don't see where the disparity in timing is here between the Crab Apple work and the Highway Nine work is.
I think the disparity is, it's not just Lou Oliver's project, it's probably more the Mayfield-Mid-Broadwell Intersection Project that we would be trying to work with. That's the project that looks more at the Crab Apple area as a whole and tries to take the recommendations from the Transportation Master Plan and make them real. And it would be those types of projects that we would be tying into with this T grant rather than Lou's. Lou's certainly provides input to that, but it's the actual physical transportation enhancements that may come out of that study.
Okay, does the T grant include traffic lights? You mentioned light and street lighting. Does it include traffic lights?
Not in this particular application. We could repackage this for a new project within the Crab Apple area if we could come up with one that we were comfortable would not be reconstructed under any potential transportation projects. That's, that's an alternative.
Well, there had been talk about the intersection just to the west of Broadwell 372 and Mayfield, just beyond the old Blind Dog, where that road aligns with the road development from the south, about installing a traffic light there.
That'd be a potential, I have not looked at that, so, you know, we could certainly evaluate that and see if that's something that could be included in this type of package.
I don't see where that intersection there would be drastically changed, no matter what the ultimate plan is for Crab Apple.
You could be right. By the time you get that part back up the Crab Apple Corridor, that could be beyond what we would be looking at with the Mayfield-Mid-Broadwell improvements.
That would seem to gobble up at least half of that $500,000, I would imagine, if you put a traffic light in it.
Okay.
Just jumping in here, almost halfway through, just kind of summarize real quick what I've got and then add to it. What I've, like, good bit of discussion, but what I've kind of taken away, I think, from the first three is that we would like to use the dollars, and at this point, at least the three of your preferences, to keep them in Crab Apple, if at all possible. Have I heard that right?
I would say for myself, yes, if we're evaluating these other options. But of course, I don't want to see us lose those dollars and not allocate them to Highway Nine because Highway Nine is equally deserving, but because this grant, as Councilmember Thurman mentioned, was first identified specifically for Crab Apple, I think it would be, in keeping with the expectations of citizens and business owners, that we at least look there first, not to make up projects, but to see how we can lever projects that are already being discussed. And then, of course, if we can't, because of timelines, absolutely would support those dollars in Highway Nine because both areas are deserving.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, on a somewhat related note, do we have a status of the streetlights along Deerfield that's going to be paid with motor funds?
They've been ordered, and I think they've been marked out. We're working on utility locations and final locations for the poles. There's about an eight-week lead time to those poles, those lights should be in or coming in very shortly.
Okay. Anybody else? You know, I'd just like to add that, you know, while I certainly agree that this money was slated for Crab Apple and that's the intent and whatnot, but I'm also sensitive to the fact we don't want to waste it. And I would certainly be, you know, very open to, you know, staff's recommendations of what, what could be done in Crab Apple that, you know, won't ultimately get torn out or could change or cost, you know, waste money, but would certainly, you know, be in support of spending some smart money on Highway Nine too, if we can come to, like I said, what makes the most sense, if we spend some in Crab Apple, but then what we can get our most bang for the buck for the Highway Nine area also, so. Bill?
Regarding Crab Apple and street lighting, if we were to go ahead within the next, say, two or three months, four months, right after we get through the Crab Apple charade, if we decided upon a street light design, lamp, for instance, could we go ahead and purchase enough lamps to do the Crab Apple area and just put them in stock? Or do we have to have all of this work in place in order to collect on that grant?
Well, you would have to follow their design guidelines. So we would have to go through the concepts, environmentals, preliminary design, final design, and then bid in order to purchase those. I'm not sure that that, that we would be able to purchase and then reimburse under this type of grant. So it would have to be part of the entire design process.
But I think what Bill's saying is, could we go ahead and purchase all of them that we would need, but just install them in the areas that we don't know are going to be changed? And then the remaining lamps, we'll just have to pay to have installed once we, once the rest of the plan is completed?
Yeah. We would have to go through the design process before we could expend those funds on any materials.
To what extent would you carry design process? Could you not just survey the length of roadway down through there and determine how many light poles you're going to need ultimately?
If it were only that simple, they're going to require us to go through the standard environmental right-of-way certification, survey, preliminary concepts.
Nothing simple.
I don't know that there's a way around that. We can certainly ask the question, but that's not typically what they would require under this type of grant.
Is, I'm not sure if staff's got enough direction. Is it, is it safe to say that, you know, what I'm hearing is the, you know, everybody, I think everybody's pretty much on the same page that, you know, we want to use this money for what it was intended, but we also want to be smart about it. So if staff could recommend, you know, using a part of it in Crab Apple that they're sure of, but then maybe we look for some options to, to do something else that, say, Highway Nine?
Right, I think what I'm taking away from this is that we're going to try and repackage this grant in the Crab Apple area and either use these, expend these funds on that new project, or take whatever is left over to a new project in the Highway Nine Corridor.
New Milton Parkway.
Maybe new street signs.
Is that, does the council agree with that? Alan, you're, Julie?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, just a quick question. To clarify, when you say that you would have to repackage it, you don't have to reapply. You just mean to get confirmation from the state that those dollars are still ours, it's just a function of confirming with the state or the feds how we would allocate the dollars? Or is there a risk in repackaging that we lose the dollars?
You wouldn't lose the dollars. It's, it's a reapplication, but it's, the dollars are there. It's just a new application assigning those dollars to a new project.
So we're not asking for permission again because we have the dollars, okay?
That's right, that's right.
I just want to make sure to clarify the word repackaging. And the other thought that comes to mind, and you've probably got this on your bullet list that you've already captured, but knowing that we also have the park land and the park between the two schools, knowing that, again, I think you could package that from a transportation perspective. We know that we've got dollars and we've got a timeline, we've got a plan, thanks to Cindy and that committee. That may be another place that we could just allocate these dollars, and then that would free up other dollars that could then be used on Highway Nine. So just another thought, it seems like there's probably a lot, several different things, Carter, that you and obviously other staff members could look at, but to the mayor's point, we look forward to your recommendations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carter. Chris?
Yeah, we'll give you, let's go with a couple others, and then we'll move to executive session. Storm update was one thing I just wanted to, obviously, coming off of, and you, I wanted to talk about kind of the quick reactions. Councilmembers aren't very brought up, it's a good idea to do an after-action debrief. We've started to do that at the staff level, we've already made some notes as to how we might do something different next time or different materials that Public Works is looking at for the next event, should we possibly have the opportunity to put something down on the roads before the ice actually occurs. All that being said, the one part of this update that I will provide you with is that we do need to note, put you on notice, just in conformance with our purchasing policies, that we did make one emergency purchase for the storm, and that was for the removal equipment that we rented from one of our local providers, who also has done other work in the city of Milton. I'll send you an email with that exact dollar amount. It was, it was more than five but less than $6,000, which was certainly something that I think was appropriate for our response. I can tell you that between materials and equipment and overtime as related to this storm, we estimate that our expenditures were somewhere in the neighborhood of $30,000, which a dollar a citizen, I think, in our response was, and I can't take credit for that. Bill came up with that one when he said a dollar, since that sounds pretty good deal to me. You know, when you put it that way, I think that was a good, good, good deal for this particular event. I'll let Carter talk about Public Works, I'll just let you know a quick summary that the police department did increase their staffing, and this was one of those interesting events where the police department increased the staffing and we got no calls for service. And that's a great thing, honestly. That is a testament to the people that took the advice of everybody that was, whether it was us talking or the news talking, people took the advice and stayed home, and that really worked. It also caused for there to be no calls for service. So we were prepared in the event that we needed the police to respond. The fire department did, in fact, staff up the reserve fire engine that we had, so we had four pieces of apparatus in the city. And what they did for the purpose of responding to medical calls was to turn the pickup truck, the four-wheel-drive pickup truck we have into an emergency medical response vehicle, which means it ran medical calls everywhere in the city. And we felt it was appropriate to put a $30,000 piece of equipment on the roads, more so than a quarter, or more so than a half million dollar piece of equipment for every medical call, when we would roll those fire trucks is only when we needed fire suppression. So that was kind of the police and fire response. Both those chiefs did a great job. Matt did a great job, this building, even though City Hall just closed, this building was active 24 hours a day, beginning Sunday night, when people came in prior to the event, to make sure that we were here and live when the event actually occurred. So the building was staffed and we had emergency response crews here for every hour that the event was ongoing. Carter says he sleeps well under his desk, which, Carter, I could let him talk about that if he wants to. He might leave that part out. But Carter sleeps better under his desk, apparently, than the fire chief did, but it had something to do with the fact that his air mattress wouldn't stay inflated, so, not sure how that went. But, you know, you get an ice event like this, and it either turns into a public safety event or it turns into a Public Works event. You know, a public safety event, if people leave their houses and get out in it, otherwise it's a Public Works event because there's stuff on the roads that need to be closed so people can get around. Thankfully, this one really turned into more of a Public Works event than it did a public safety event. So, having said that, maybe Carter could just kind of give you a high-level update as to how, what our response was.
Maybe that, before, Carter, I guess we really need to sit here and run, realize what the real lesson, the biggest lesson was, that even though we ramped up with public safety and whatnot, apparently the, and there was no calls, apparently the criminals and the bad guys listened too, and you tell them to stay at home and don't go out.
Right.
Stay off the street.
Or they're just going to get here.
Well, we did, we, we ramped up as much as we could from a staffing standpoint. All three of us, all three of us were in operation from...
That's why you have the crutches, isn't it? Yes.
From Sunday night last week until about midday Sunday this past weekend, we worked well with our partner, Optech. They provided us up to four additional staff members to run our trucks, sand trucks, spreader trucks, that were well-used. Last year, when we bought those, we thought as soon as we bought them, that would be the end of the snow events, and we'd never get an opportunity to use them. That's the third time this year that they've been deployed, and much better than last year when we were throwing sand by hand. We put out probably close to 200 tons of material during this event, sand and salt when we could get it. We had some assistance from GDOT on some of that material. And probably at the height, when we were, we had some motor graders from JJ and E and some front-end loaders and the snow removal part of it, by the time we got to Wednesday, things had pretty well frozen up, and that became a lot more difficult. But at the height, we were probably operating with four pieces of equipment and up to 11, 11 people out there, so relatively small, but they seemed to be very effective, dedicated, extremely hard-working during this, this one-week period. Proud of the guys' efforts and what they were able to accomplish with what they had, and hopefully it's the last time this year that we have to do that. Although I see there's snow.
Snow, they said, snow maybe on Thursday.
Oh, really? Yeah, Florida's like a chance of...
My personal lesson through all that is stock up on firewood before there's a snowstorm.
Milk and bread.
Yeah.
We're ramping up for that one now.
All right, we're going to have firewood.
I can't give out my secrets to who has salt throughout these events because Lowe's and Home Depot sell out, so if anybody wants to know, there's, there is a store in Milton that always has salt. So ask me that when we're sitting here and tell you where it is.
I have some secrets too. Well, again, I think from everybody, thank you to all our staff and public safety and everybody involved, and, you know, Jason was very active during this whole time too, so both getting information out and receiving information from a lot of people calling, so thank you, Jason.
Call Jason the nicksel master. One other quick update, don't want to go into a whole lot of detail on this one tonight, just want to, again, it's one of these things, I get on your radar screen early, and then we'll provide more detail as the event draws closer. We've had some discussions with some opportunities of how we could shrink down our usable space here at City Hall. We've got 23,000 square feet, we simply just don't need 23,000 square feet any longer with the staff the size that it is at this point after the transition. But that's not always the easiest thing to do, to take a landlord and say, you know, we have a lease here for 69 months, now I want to give it back to you, and oh, by the way, I want our rates to stay good. So we've started to explore some of that opportunity and how we could potentially give back about 8,000 square feet. We could still function as a city and still do all that good stuff. The first negotiated agreement that we have, that the landlord has come back with, is just, it's not something I'm willing to live with, nor do I think it's acceptable, it's just not attractive at all. So we are going to go back and forth a little bit, and, you know, I don't want to necessarily throw out there yet that we would, you know, consider walking away from this next September and moving somewhere else if we didn't have another building to go to, but unless the offer becomes better than what it currently is, that it becomes a very real possibility. So I just want to let you know that, you know, September, just like we were talking, two years goes fast, September the 30th, 2012, still more than a year away, we've got plenty of time, but we don't want to be sitting here in July of next year wondering, oh, gosh, how did our, how did our City Hall rent go up as high as it did, and why do we have no other options? We're trying to shrink us down, and shrinking us down, and even shrinking us down with the option of extending for a short period of time would seem to be attractive. At the end of the day, it would provide the space that we have, we would be tighter in it, but we would be using more of it, and it still would provide what we need to be able to conduct this. And it still would provide what we need to be able to conduct business in the city. So just know that that's on the radar screen. Yet, like just about every other project I pull off the shelf, doesn't seem to go easy. But if, I guess if anything went easy, then this job would be nearly as fun. So further updates on that as we move, as we move through, I'm happy to provide any updates if you have any questions on any specific items. If not, we've got a couple items for executive session.
Okay, and the only other thing I wanted to add to, to Councilmember Tark, I was excited, as I'm sure everyone else from the positive news with his mind.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss land acquisition and litigation?
So moved.
All right, have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's unanimous.
I want to reconvene in this meeting. Do I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to reconvene. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Do I have a, we'll conclude this meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Your demand.
Bye, buddy. Come back.